As great part press and the CoopStar, our official newspapers, and posted on the bulletin board in this whole building.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the planning board for the Borough of Belmar. Please join the board and the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. April Volcal, please.
Mr. Meyer?
President.
Mr. McFolli?
Here.
Mr. DiVazio?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Lomis?
Here.
Mr. Piero?
Here.
Council Lewis?
Here.
Reverend Fusco?
Here.
And the shark is?
Here.
All right. Doug, would you like to give us an overview of today's workshop? Uh, excuse me, our review of the amendment for this?
Sure. Uh, basically, we don't have any applications here. We need to swear in the law. No? No?
Yep.
There's only a gentleman as that. If we've already sworn him in.
He's already been sworn in.
Then you remain sworn.
It's on the bill since the thirteenth.
You remain sworn. Skip that and check off that agenda item. Uh, but as to our workshop, this is the Seaport redevelopment plan. Uh, this involves blocks fifty-six, the blocks one, two, four, and six, block fifty-seven, block four, block seventy-five, blocks four, five, and six, and block eighty-seven, blocks one, two, and three. Uh, we're gonna take, we look at an amendment to our redevelopment plan for those limited blocks this evening. Uh, this is what we proposed by Mayor and Council. We have this bell here this evening. Uh, the wall has proved that plan. Um, we spend too much time, other than to specify, this is not a site plan for any of these, any of these matters. Uh, that's for numbers in the board, numbers in the public. Basically, we're acting in our role pursuant to NJS A forty, code fifty-five D dash twenty-six. And this is where any amendment to the development regulations gets referred to the planning board. And then, once referred, Mayor and Council won't act on that development regulation for three, four, or five days. Since we have to sign that three, five days, we hold our hearing. We give an opportunity to get the board's thought processes on that. We give the public an opportunity to hear about the development regulation. With the understanding on that we don't propose the regulation or the development ordinance, we don't approve it. It's just our function to act sort of as the governing body's legislative committee. And our ultimate goal is to advise the board, or, excuse me, advise Mayor and Council as to whether or not we believe the development regulation is consistent with the master plan. Sometimes we also discuss some development regulations, but is it consistent with the master plan? And if it is consistent, so advise the Mayor and Council. And if it's inconsistent, simply to advise the Mayor and Council where we believe it is inconsistent with the master plan. Um, that doesn't change what the governing body does at all, other than perhaps change a vote requirement if it's inconsistent. But once the Mayor and Council, as you know in the past, when we've done, we prepare a report, identify those issues, identify those things we heard during the hearing. If there's some inconsistency, Mayor and Council has an opportunity to address that inconsistency. Maybe they do make changes, maybe they don't. It's not incumbent upon them to do that. They don't need our approval, but they have traditionally looked to us as sort of the expert in planning, particularly we have our panel here in Brooklyn, as to how this development regulation is consistent with the master plan. Um, that's pretty much what's on our dais this evening. Um, I anticipate that what we'll do is we'll mark the Seaport redevelopment plan, just as an exhibit. Um, the board gives the benefit of the credentials of this bell, uh, for her to finish the role of the advocate, and then have her walk us through, uh, generally, you know, her providing purpose. Why, why are we making this change at this point in time? What is the change that we're making? How is this different, if at all, from the development regulations? And ultimately, ask her if she believes it's consistent with the master plan and why, or if it's inconsistent with the master plan and why. Um, we'll have an opportunity to ask questions about the, uh, developer plan, and then, once the board's done, we generally open up to the public, uh, however the chair wants to handle that, presumably. Give them an opportunity to, you know, ask questions, raise questions. Um, sometimes in the past, when those questions are that, sometimes, I mean, that's a good point, maybe you need to tell Mayor and Council about that. But, you know, as I said, our goal is really to act as the mayor, as I was about to say, to give them the benefits of our thoughts on this development regulation.
All right. Thank you, Doug. All right. Moving through the agenda, can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes from the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five planning board meeting?
Oh.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McFolli?
I'm staying.
Mr. DiVazio?
I'm staying.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lomis?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
I'm staying.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Fusco?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, moving to the sole item on our agenda tonight, uh, the review of the amendment on the Seaport redevelopment plan. Uh, Ms. Bell, we would like to get you on record with your credentials if you don't mind. Would you give us the benefit of your credentials?
Sure. So I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm also a certified plug plane manager. Um, and I'm here in my capacity as, uh, the board's planner.
Thank you. And we accept your credentials. Uh, if you would, give us the benefit of walking through, uh, from your perspective, the amendment, uh, and take us through each of the, certainly, the sections of the, uh, the amendment.
Yeah.
Which is part, which is part of the PB one.
Okay.
Are you tired of it? Tired, tired.
Yep.
Do you need to swear me in, or am I? Doug, do you need to swear me in, or am I?
Oh, yes. You saw me swear the testimony before the board, the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth.
I do. Um, so, kind of just to reiterate, uh, what Mr. Kovac said earlier, this is not a site plan. This is just an amendment to the Seaport redevelopment plan. So this is basically just changing the zoning in certain sections of the Seaport redevelopment plan a little bit. So, um, any application would still need to come in with a full site plan. They would still, you know, need to enter into a developer's agreement with the borough, um, get T D R C approval, come to the planning board and get planning approval for, um...
For the benefit of the public, what is the T D R C?
The Technical Review and Design. So that's, in the redevelopment area, that's kind of the first step for an application is, um, heard by the planning board. So this is not approving anything but for allowing certain new uses to exist in certain areas of redevelopment.
And if by chance you had it, um, as a backdrop, what, what led to this amendment, if you would?
I'm getting there right now.
Okay. But I think that's important.
Thank you. So this, um, amends three sub-areas, A, B, and C, which I'll go to, go into in a little bit more detail. Um, but it allows for the cre, the creation of affordable housing in compliance, um, with settlement agreements that were entered into as part of the borough's affordable housing plan. So, um, Belmar has been worked through, for the past few years, has been working through the affordable housing process to come into compliance, um, and have a, uh, compliant housing plan. And throughout that, as part of that process, um, basically, they were kind of sued by three interveners who wanted their affordable housing projects, um, included in the housing plan. So, um, this settlement agreement is part of the overall, will be part of the overall approved housing plan for the borough of Belmar, will protect them, um, from future interveners, um, for, you know, their obligation at this time. Um, so basically, it's to provide for affordable housing in the Seaport redevelopment area. There's three sub-areas. Subarea A is, uh, block eighty-seven, blocks one, two, and three, um, which is basically the area between Route thirty-five, West Railroad Road, Tenth and E., so the existing motor lodge and then those two, um, pavilions next to it. Um, the permitted use in that area would be a four-story building consisting of one hundred and ninety-eight residential units with a fifteen percent set aside for affordable housing. So that'll be allocated as one hundred and seventy-eight market rate units and twenty affordable units. Um, there will be a minimum of two hundred and fifty-two onsite parking spaces and then thirty-six additional parking spaces within the railroad, uh, in New Bridge. So that is just a brief overview of subarea A. Subarea B is, um, block fifty-six, blocks one, two, four, and six, block fifty-seven, blocks, uh, four, and consists of the area bounded by Sixth Avenue, River Road, and Main Street. So it's basically that triangular partial, the Evelyn five oh seven pizza place building, um, includes Belmar paint, um...
And the bar stool across the street.
And then the gravel parking lot across the street near Klein's. Um, within that area, um, one building is permitted on, uh, block fifty-six, which is known as the East Building, and then one building is permitted on block fifty-seven, the West Building. Um, within that entire subarea, there will be a maximum of one hundred and thirty-nine residential units, including one hundred and fifteen for sale market rate units, and then a seventeen percent set aside providing twenty-four affordable rental units. The East Building will have, uh, six thousand square feet of retail and commercial space. Um, both buildings will have residential units on the ground floor. Just one thing to note, um, there will be just, um, one change when the plan goes back to the council, um, in the height requirements, um, the, uh, exceptions to the height requirements, so architectural elements, uh, parapet walls, things like that, um, are for both buildings, not just the West Building. Um, and that's subarea B. Subarea C is block seventy-five, blocks four, and five, and six, um, and that is, um, basically across from, basically, east, on the east side of Main Street, across from, um, Anger. Uh, and that will permit one mixed-use building, um, consisting of fifty-six rental units, including forty-six market rate units and ten affordable units, approximately three thousand seven hundred and fifty-two square feet of retail and commercial space, and seventy-six parking spaces. So the, those are the three, um, sub-areas, what's being proposed, uh, to be permitted in each of them. Um, as Mr. Kovac said earlier, the role of the planning board is to determine consistency with the master plan. I did review the borough's master plan, um, specifically the two thousand and sixteen reexamination report, and I found it to be consistent, um, with the following goals and objectives in, of that master plan. Um, in particular, both the two thousand reexam and then the two thousand and six reexam and then reaffirmed in the two thousand and sixteen reexam talk about, um, the borough should continue its effort towards achieving and maintain, maintaining substantive certification by the council on affordable housing. Um, the borough should comply with the New Jersey Council on Affordable Housing. The two thousand and sixteen reexam, um, speaks to how that process, um, had changed a little bit, and the borough had, uh, adopted a housing plan, um, but then, you know, the Supreme Court made a ruling which, uh, changed compliance a little bit, so the borough was, had not yet, um, come into compliance at the time of the two thousand and sixteen master plan. So this is something that, um, the borough has had goals to do for the last twenty-five years. So, um, this will bring us into compliance with, um, our affordable housing requirements. Um, and for those reasons, I think it is compliant with the master plan. It's consistent with the master plan.
Um, a couple, a quick question. Um, the amendment gets into very specific detail around parking, breakdown of units. Um, are all of those elements part of the settlement? And is that why they're defined as such?
Yes. So, um, all of the, the parking, the height, the, um, allocation of units, um, those are all things that were agreed upon within the settlement agreements, and, um, that's why they're in the plan.
So they're predetermined? This board has no say on any of those elements?
That's correct.
That, that relates to height, density, unit count, unit mix?
Correct.
Correct. Just to be clear of what this board could impose when it does come to site plan review?
Right.
Correct. Okay. Any other testimony before we roll to questions from the board?
I don't, I think, no, that pretty much covers it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, at this point, I'm gonna open it up to board questions. I'm gonna roll down the board if I can. Rick, let me start with you.
All right. May I? I have a question. Um, I'll ask you. So are you concerned about the height of these buildings? Because there were, you came before this board in two thousand and twenty-one, and it was a pretty big presentation about, let's say, LATE, uh, where we created, we increased the height to sixty feet. Okay? Uh, you were in favor of that? You thought it was...
So I was actually not geared for that.
You were not? I'm sorry. I forgot. I'll try. You're, uh, that was a gentleman. That was... Uh, you, um, the plan came through, that was appropriate at the time, which included a whole lot of, like, setbacks, moving back off of the, uh, property line on Eighth and Tenth, uh, over eight feet, uh, and then having the maximum height of the building twenty-eight feet. Uh, those were things that the board commented on, uh, and suggested back to council. That was in, um, or is it two thousand and twenty-two oh two? That was rescinded in April of twenty-three, I believe. Um, and now, we're at a building with sixty-four feet. So how do we still say that's, you know, in line with our master plan? Is it because that's what the court ordered, or is it because that's what you're saying?
So, um, the prior, uh, proposed development here did not include any affordable housing. Um, this is helping us to meet our affordable housing obligation.
Well, we didn't hear anything on that, that project at the time either. It was just a similar Seaport redevelopment.
So, but thi, this planned amendment is requiring the inclusion of certain affordable housing requirements?
Well, they could have included affordable housing with what we approved.
But it wasn't required at the time.
Correct. Could have been depreciated. Um, parking, that's huge. So i, if I'm looking at just one example, I think Seaport redevelopment originally, uh, requires two, two parking spaces per unit?
It requires two parking spaces per residential unit and zero parking spaces for any affordable unit.
Okay. So if we have a hundred and ninety-eight units proposed, how many of those are affordable? This one was twenty, so a hundred and seventy-eight. So that requirement would have been one hundred and seventy-eight times two?
Correct.
Okay. So, and we only have...
Two hundred and fifty-two and an additional thirty-two.
Two fifty-two. So we're, so we're short about fifty-five?
So that's something that was also part of, you know, um, negotiations, was agreeing to those, uh, parking requirements.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned the thirty-six additional stalls. Are they dedicated, or are they open to the public?
They're open to the public.
They're open.
So they wouldn't count towards residential anywhere, right?
So it could be some type of shared parking agreement, which the Seaport redevelopment plan does allow for. Um, you know, the public spaces may be used during the daytime, and then at nighttime, they, uh, could be used by residents.
Um, Ms. Bell, one question I have. The concept plan shows two hundred and fifty-seven parking stalls, but yet, the amendment calls out two hundred and fifty-two stalls?
That's a big...
Right. So, but still an A. Um, and I believe that was, um, after the, the request of the developers team in case, through their engineering process, if, you know, they needed to put a column in for support or something like that and lose a parking stall, they did want a little bit of flexibility there. So that was the agreed upon number.
So they were looking for some, essentially, just to have some contingency for that?
Right.
So we should, I mean, this is a record, part of the amendment, the, the...
So, um...
The, the concept plan should be updated to incorporate that. That could be a comment that we go back to the Mayor and Council.
Okay.
But it should be consistent. I guess the other question I have is, um, the permitted use note fifteen, fifteen percent set aside, but the actual is closer to ten.
So the, uh, fifteen percent set aside, part of that, I believe, is a payment in lieu?
Oh, so this was the, the payment.
So they're, so they're providing some of their obligation, um...
Via, via that payment for affordable. Okay. I was curious about that.
So we didn't lose nine units?
Correct.
What's on, sorry?
So we didn't lose nine units?
No.
Okay.
No, apparently not.
When we get to the site plan review of, um, of this, are we gonna have a statement on the infrastructure improvements that are desperately needed on Route thirty-five, specifically Sixth Avenue? Eighth Avenue's a disaster right now. Are these developers gonna be able to still be forced to improve our utilities, or is that coming back onto the town?
I believe that would be part of any developer's agreement, um, and any construction, you know. The engineer would review what is needed for that.
And is Route thirty-five a county or state highway?
Route thirty-five is a state highway.
So they would have to go through the DOT for that entry, exit, or any improvements there?
Correct.
So that would be part of what they would need to go through. It may not, it may not address infrastructure, but it would, it would emphasize traffic movement.
That's exactly right. Just because, you know, we're permitting certain things, they still need to get all of the, um, approvals from any outstanding agency, any agency, outside agency that anyone else would. So, you know, they...
So DEP?
DEP, DOT, anything like that.
Yeah, the utilities are a big one, so maybe we can get that question answered, or we can find out more about, maybe, if I'm asking it down. There's one question that, I may have a few more questions, but I'll, I'll pass it around. If that's okay.
Absolutely. I'll come back to my questions if they come up, or if others, I'll bring it up. Bill, please.
You know, much has been mandated here from above. And it's, I understand, affordable housing requirements, um, is there any influence that'll be left with our council on starting times for these projects? And control of, you know, we can't start them all at the same time, you'll just create mayhem all, all over the town. I was just wondering if there's any, any understanding of, you know, this has to be managed, assuming they go forward, if they all went forward in a short timeframe, it's much worse than, than staggering. I, I, is there any control on that, on that?
So, um, at this time, there's no developer's agreements with any proposals? That's something, you know, the timeline for a project would be part of a developer's...
So council still has control, says, okay, we're not gonna, we can do this one, then we're gonna do that one, and...
Correct.
Just to make it, to avoid the mayhem that will come with them all going on.
So it can be, Bill, a recommendation from the board?
Yeah.
That we go back to Mayor and Council and note that as part of the developer's agreement, uh, that consideration be given to staggering the timing of said developments, and it can be something that Doug can incorporate in comments going back. So I think it's an excellent point.
Well, the point is, you know, like it or not, you know, there's positives to every project, and there's certainly negatives. And, uh, sometimes you, you just have to manage those negatives, and, uh, one project at a time is, is a lot less onerous than four starting within a month. I'm just hoping we have some control of that.
Anything else?
Oh, that's it.
Okay. Brett?
So, um, I'd like a little bit of clarification on, um, what you brought up at the, so, subarea A, the, the building on thirty-five, um, it's called out as, um, so there's a hundred and ninety-eight units, right? And fifteen percent set aside would be thirty units, not twenty. So you said the other ten are going, um...
So they'll, they are required, um, to provide a payment in lieu of the creation of a certain amount of units.
So does that, when, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to... When they provide a payment in lieu, does that count for the borough's requirements?
Yes.
Without actually making that...
And then, is it true, Ms. Bell, that the, that fund would be used to create additional affordable housing in town and other locations?
It could be used to create additional affordable housing units. It could be used to rehab existing affordable housing units.
I guess my question is, do we, does the borough get credit for the units when the contribution is made, or when the contribution is used to, to, to actually make units?
So these agreements are part of the overall agreement for approving Belmar's plan, and Belmar did not, Belmar ensured that they did not, um, they were not as adept by accepting a payment in lieu instead of the creation of the actual units there.
And so this, uh, helps us meet our requirements through phase three or through phase four?
Through phase three.
And what is the requirement for phase four? Do you know?
So that's still being negotiated.
I think, you know, one of my concerns is that, you know, what, overall, this is what, four hundred units or close to it, uh, when you combine the three, and we're getting, what, thirty-four affordable housing units? Why not? I feel like these are the last three big spots, let's...
It's actually fifty-four. We're good. Fifty-four. Yeah, out of three, three eighty-three, three ninety-four.
Um, is there, I mean, obviously, now, there's no way to go forward to, to, to do more, right? To get it out of the way now while we're doing these big buildings, if you... Right? While we're being forced to, to make these big buildings, let's put, put more in there so we don't have to do more later.
But I think some of this comes back to phase four, is gonna be analysis of what's left to develop in town, right?
Correct.
So if these are built out, um, the phase four commitment will be evaluating what, if any, properties remain either undeveloped or in need of revitalization. So I think that, um, although you're right, you could certainly try to bring more into the equation, I think that was part of the negotiations back and forth with each of these developers that will assume the town was, was making.
Yes. And, um, as part, uh, you know, a town like Belmar is mostly built out, right? There's not a lot of plan to develop new, um, housing on. So that's something that is taken into consideration when determining what our realistic development potential is, um, and that is something we're in the process of doing for the fourth round. Um, so these projects satisfy our third round obligation. The fourth round is still, you know, we're still working on that. But they won't say, you know, you have this land that you put a project on, and you said you're gonna put a project on here on the third round, but they haven't broke ground yet, so you have to use that land again. Once we have land that's been, you know, we're, we say we're gonna put in an affordable housing project there, they're not going to counter it against us for, again. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. Now, did you have something?
Well, I, I think that was kind of one of, I remember, but none of these meet the twenty percent requirement. So does that mean for even Seaport? I know subarea A is gonna make a payment in lieu of ten percent. Subarea B is gonna, they have seventeen percent affordable, which twenty is typically what states look for.
So, um...
So why, why didn't they negotiate to twenty percent?
All of these agreements, uh, were, uh, through extensive negotiations. Um, the developers, you know, came in with things that were much bigger and higher. Um, and they, you know, developers often say, well, to make, you know, the affordable units work, we need X, Y, and Z height, or this many number of units. Um, so this was, uh, the height and the numbers that both the borough and the developers could, um, agree on, and also the Fair Share Housing Center.
And if I may, just to, just...
Please.
I, I'm assuming, Ms. Bell, that your credentials didn't extend to that of his attorney?
That's correct.
And that you were, you, you did not negotiate the agreement, but...
That is, that is correct.
Once, once the agreements were negotiated and the parties were resolved, and perhaps more importantly, and tell me if I'm making a statement that's incorrect.
Once the agreements were negotiated and the parties were resolved, and perhaps more importantly, and tell me if I'm making a statement that's incorrect. More importantly, once the court accepted that, you were then gifted with the opportunity to design something that would work.
That's correct.
Okay. I think my last question is for SubArea C, which is A-B, A-B, if I remember. I couldn't read it on the, on my little copy. What is the depth of the retail space? I'm a little concerned that we're putting these, you know, it's, having retail space just to say we have it and it's not really usable. You know, so I couldn't tell from my copy what the depth of that was, but I just wanted to make sure that it was, you know, a usable space and not just space for, I don't know, ATM or something.
It is, it's over three thousand square feet, so it is a usable space. I do recall a few years ago, this board got an application for an ATM and that was less than a hundred square feet, so.
And once again, to Mr. Kovacs' point, the retail size has been predetermined and part of the settlement, so.
Well, I do wanna make sure, I wanted to, I may have overstepped. I wanted to make it clear that our planner here is not negotiating the process, but is trying to get us closer to the settlement. This is something that's under review, still has to be accepted. But along those lines, I guess mine was towards the board's question, and it's appropriate for the board to ask that question. Why don't we push for more? This individual isn't doing that pushing. This individual wants to go as far as we can, see where we can put a pencil to paper.
And my only point is that, for the most part, this is a step of multiple steps as part of that settlement.
And I think also, and I'll ask the question, you know, the master plan has always spoke, or is reviewed in every one of those iterations from going back from two thousand, two thousand six, twenty sixteen, of a mixed residential-commercial. And if you went to straight residential, you would clearly be inconsistent with the master plan and the iterations it's had over twenty years.
Well, so in this particular location, you know, on Main Street and Eighth Avenue, it has spoken to a mixed use.
Okay, thank you. Louis?
Yeah, I don't know if I should direct it to Christine or Doug, but the requirement that the state has to the town for the number of units, is that still important? I remember reading about something.
There are, you have.
By other towns, not by.
You've had several rounds, if you will, of what our current ones are. You have an opportunity on this latest round to object if the mayor and council accept it. You still have an opportunity to negotiate how we're going to do those things.
Right, so the fourth round started this year and the mayor, the borough of Belmar has until the end of June to have adopted an affordable housing plan as part of that because there is not really the potential for large amounts of development within Belmar that we will take what is known as a vacant land adjustment, which basically reviews the potential of available land within the borough and then adjusts our obligation based on what's actually there.
The borough, way before June, had to give some indications for where they were going.
Correct.
What's brought you home this?
What numbers that's driving this project or this amendment? Are those still being contested by, import by other towns, even though we accepted our number?
No.
No, okay, that's about right. Could these developments, particularly A, could that have met affordable housing requirements without having to make the project so excessively large?
So if the project was, you know, a story shorter or something, the overall number of units would be less? The affordable housing obligation would therefore be less?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, they could still have the same number of units, it'd just be a larger percentage, right? The units could be smaller. They could charge more for them, maybe, for the non-affordable units? I don't know. I mean, I'm not a developer and I certainly didn't sit into them. I simply, could they have met affordable housing unit requirement without making this into a trust?
This is what was agreed upon after.
Fairly loaded question.
So yes, the answer is obviously yes, right? I mean, it could have made some. The other thing is, I remember, I sat on, it was early on on the board when this was originally in front of it. And this developer was proposing the parking to be underground. Where are those two hundred fifty-two spaces?
I believe there still are some underground spaces on this.
I don't know. I don't, I didn't get any further.
There's no underground parking?
There's no underground.
Surface level.
Surface level, sorry. There's no underground parking. There are two levels.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis?
I have no questions.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Mayor? Okay, thank you. Linda, please.
So these three units are in the Seaport redevelopment area. Do they require a CAPRA permit?
I believe at least SubArea A will require a CAPRA permit.
Both three of them are qualified by the same standard as A. The reason I ask is, A has already applied for CAPRA permit, that got rejected. The second approval has it broken down in two units. It changes the configuration of the development. Shouldn't we be waiting before we approve all this for the CAPRA approval?
So we spoke earlier, you know, any outside agency approval, the developers would still be required to get when they came forward with any site plan. That includes CAPRA, that includes, you know, any DEP approval, whether it be a flood hazard, anything like that, that includes DOT in SubArea A. So that's really beyond the jurisdiction of the planning board.
But my point is, the CAPRA changed the configuration of the units and will also change the needs from all those different units. Shouldn't we consider putting it on the record that we get it, ask them to go for CAPRA permits earlier in the process?
Right. In terms of what this board has before, the intelligence of your statement can't be refuted. But in terms of what this board can do, in terms of requiring anyone to do anything, really our role is simply to take a look at this and say, does this, is this consistent with the master plan? If there are other approvals required, which ultimately change this amendment, we'll again have a do-over. And our council will again, in a way, first reading up here, but the thirty-five they've run. But in terms of how you time that, you may recall from your experience here on the board that we have general catch rules that if there are any other permits required, the applicant is going to comply with that. Generally, we also place in that if, as a result of gaining those permits or gaining those approvals, that agency required you to do anything, which changes what we approve. We usually get a chance to see it again. But in terms of, that's further down the line than this process. Our process right now is, is this really consistent with the master plan? You're at the three thousand feet, you're down in the meetings. We're gonna get there.
And if, and if a plan, a site plan is required to be changed in a way that makes it inconsistent with what is permitted in this plan amendment, then they would never get to the planning board and that would not be heard.
Thank you.
And we don't have the benefit of the CAPRA information as a board, probably, as you share. So there's not much we can do with that at this point. Any other questions, Linda?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the insights. I have a few questions. And I'm probably gonna pulse on a couple of points I'd made earlier. Can we go to page sixteen on Section D, concept plan? It notes seventeen sheets, but yet our package only includes ten?
Right, so the entire, I'm just, I believe it's writing, but that entire concept plan they provided that is part of the settlement agreement is seventeen sheets. Not all of those sheets were really relevant for what the project would look like for the concept plan to be included.
So what's an example, and who deemed it not relevant?
So one sheet was like a breakdown of the bedroom switch.
Like a building tabulation sheet.
Correct. So things like that aren't illustrated above this.
F, number three, says concrete is permitted for sidewalks and walkways. I'm gonna make a recommendation, at least from the board's perspective, that we should ask that brick pavers be used on Main Street. It's been our standard on Main Street, so I'd ask that we make that minor adjustment. On SubArea B, the illustrations, the Torrey Dallas Partners plans, at the bottom of those plans, there's a very small typing. That small typing includes things like they can change the unit count, the parking arrangement or count, the mix count can vary due to market conditions.
So the site plan is for the illustrative purposes. They can't change the unit count because that's been agreed upon in the settlement agreement and is in the redevelopment.
So I'm gonna make a recommendation that this section on each sheet be struck.
I think that makes sense.
Because there's too many loopholes that they're gonna, they can look at and say, well, we decided to make some changes when we decided to look at what the market tells us. I don't know what that's gonna be.
We're not doing site plan. Those kinds are not for you. This is simply a developer. I agree with you, in fact.
But I'm looking at a concept plan and I have numbers and there's a complete loophole there in anything that's written in here.
It's certainly going to warrant paragraphs and.
I'm gonna go to the last section, design standards. So Christine, I'm gonna pulse on kind of what this board can and can't do, right? So once again, back to my earlier comment, in terms of density, size, unit count, affordable versus market rate, height, none of that really, because of the settlement, is part of our jurisdiction. We're gonna have a site plan review that includes classic stuff like our, you know, our planning engineer will look at, the utility sizing and capacity and connection points and all of that. But it appears, at least in this section, that we have an influence potentially on aesthetics. Is that fair?
Yes.
So things like, you know, exterior construction and signage, materials, general design, lighting, avoiding monotonous walls or roof planes, roof line offsets, provide architectural interests. All sides of the building shall be architecturally designed. This is all part of our purview in terms of what we can do. Okay. I just wanted to be clear about that. And it sets some standards on how much of the building will be storefront, will be glass, primary entrances, mechanicals will be screened. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that, but that's our purview when it gets to that point.
Right, you will be looking to see if they comply with those things.
All right, thank you. Any other questions of the board before I go to Doug?
Yeah, just one more. I forgot. Are these rentals or purchasing?
So.
Both.
They're both, yeah. So SubA, I'll go backwards just because that's where I am in the plan now. SubArea C is all rental units. SubArea B, the market rate units are for sale and the affordable units are rental. And SubArea A, I don't believe there's been a determination. The, they will most likely be right.
Brett, you got a question?
Yeah. The parking is always an issue. And one of the questions I had was, the parking spaces that are provided, is it possible to make them non-assigned, which would help the borough by providing parking versus assigned where they may sit empty for large chunks of time?
So that's not really the purview of this document. I think that's certainly something that could be discussed either the developer's agreement phase or when an application comes before this floor.
Just, you're just posting on parking. I think it's a good point. Can we walk through what the parking? I know it says clearly in here RSIS does not apply for any of these three parks, correct?
Correct.
So if I look at SubArea A, if we go down to the two fifty-two, take out the thirty-six, because that's street parking, public parking, that's one point two seven stalls per unit. Trust my math, I already did it. So then if we go to SubArea B, SubArea B is one point five one parking stalls per unit. I just wanted to highlight this. I'm not making a point about it. I'm just raising it because it's certainly different than the two O that the Seaport classically has had. And then for SubArea C, it's one point three six. So just so you know where the ratio is coming in at, and that's per unit, regardless of whether it's a three-bedroom or a two-bedroom or one-bedroom. So anyway, that's, that's at least where we stand with the ratios. Doug ahead, I'm sorry. You have a lot of questions?
Just some general questions. I noted that in your SubArea A, there's a reference to height, and it talks about the height. The four stories and sixty-four feet, six inches to the highest roof peak as measured from the finished floor. The elevations are not measured from the existing ground. It's from the finished floor level. And what do we estimate the finished floor level to be if so?
So the, so the height requirements were also part of all the settlement agreement. And the highest roof peak is measured from the finished floor. And that is, you know, the finished floor is.
Well, that could be four feet out of the ground, which would be even higher, or it could be from existing grade, which would be lower. I'm just trying to, is there, is there anything in your plan that makes that a unified or a unified, uniform, rather, elevation? Right now, we measure from existing grade for the most part in the Seaport.
Right.
This seems to be different from what they do.
It is. If you look on page eight two five of the included concept plan, that does show the elevations.
And two six actually shows. And two-six actually shows cross section.
A two-six, yeah.
So, it says the sixty-four foot six is not what we would consider building height in our normal review. It's from finished floor.
Right, and if you're stepping up or you're stepping like...
Right. When we review building height, we go from the grade.
Correct.
Unless you're in a basement elevation, then it starts from there, which, this, this, the Mediterranean is not in a...
Uh, there are portions of the site that are in the settlement.
I guess I'm just, I'm questioning as to why that was as opposed to going from existing grade.
She wasn't part of the negotiation.
Part of the settlement. Okay. Well, no, no, if that, if that's, yeah, I respect your answer, that's fine. I just wanted to point that out, so, because then in certain instances, it appears that in the existing Seaport plan, and I just wanna compare apps to apps, and the board has appreciation for where we are, we allow you a greater height in certain instances the farther back you are, either from a street elevation or, or a percentage of the building. Is that staggering of the height, something that's carried forward in this development, or can we expect to have something straight up from street, from...
So, if you look at, um, the proposed elevation, it's not a flat wall.
Right.
But it is four-story.
Well, no, I realize, right now, every, let's face it, this is my observation, you don't have to agree with the law. We don't have large tracts of land, but in Belmore, you can go up, and the affordable housing people are not changing our obligations to provide it, so since we don't have large tracts of land, I'm imagining we're going up, and I'm trying to get to is, are we still gonna be having them staggered back as we presently do? Obviously, we're going higher than three and a half stories. It is. But, are we staggering that height back or in a way that's consistent with the Seaport now, or is it different, and if so, how is it different?
So, this supersedes the Seaport redevelopment area for this section, so this is now the height requirement for this area.
See the question, is it staggered back or is it not?
So, it's not.
It's not, okay.
And that's specific to that block?
Correct.
That block and lot? 'Cause there are varying height requirements depending on the lot and block, right?
Correct. And also within the Seaport redevelopment area now, I think what Doug was asking is, you know...
With that specific one, yeah.
Are the other two measured from the finished floor also, or ju, or just that one?
Just that one.
Parking. We've seen the concept of stacked parking in the past year. Is that something that is part of the settlement here, that parking may be stacked, in other words, that a residential, it wouldn't, you know, nose to bumper?
No, that's something we typically discourage, because it's, you know, you have multiple owners, um, for people to coordinate, um, by people using...
That, that's not, that's not allowed necessarily in your plan, or is it still open?
What do you mean?
Stacked parking, I didn't see anything on that.
So, there's concept plans for each redevelopment area that illustrate the parking layout, and none of them provide stacked floors.
If you take a look at A two-one, I'm looking at the ground floor plan.
For what one?
Two point one, again. I know it's concept plan, it's not the course. I'm looking in the lower right-hand corner where there's utilities. That, that is not a stacked parking arrangement here? In the right-hand corner?
You have it in the top left also.
Yeah, in bottom right?
There is some...
Bottom right, top left.
There is some stacked parking.
Okay, all right, well, it's not specifically precluded.
Correct.
Okay. And, and the board in the past, you've allowed, you, you allowed to yourselves an opportunity to do various types of things if that were. With regard to places, like, in the concept plans, and I guess we're not, we're not precluded. Circulation, how these, how these, you know, I'm assuming we're gonna have certain counts for people involved in leaving, coming in, residentially expect some higher counts, mornings, and coming back. Were there any, were there any things in the settlement to preclude the developers from doing traffic studies, traffic counts, circulations, there's nothing to preclude in this plan?
No.
So, we can request that as part of a site plan application?
I, I would think if your TDRC is going, I want to get to that. Nothing allows them to, they're still required to go into TDRC.
Correct.
Right, so if the TDRC were to recommend that, you know, that would, yeah, that would be a recommendation. Nothing in work plans here precludes them. They still have to come for a site plan.
Correct.
They still have to enter into a developer's agreement with Mayor and Council.
Correct.
Okay, so, I'm just, I'm just concerned about the numbers that you're going to see in certain locations, certainly if anyone's very far, I imagine the state's gonna have some, something to say about that also, but then I'm also thinking of like, uh, West Railway, Railroad Lane?
Yes.
Is that, is that, is that still going to be existence under some of the concept plans?
It is in existence under the concept.
So, that, that may be, perhaps, maybe coming out of, I need to...
Yeah, there is an entry next to it.
Okay, all right. Those are all the questions I have, thank you.
Okay. I just wanna touch on heights, 'cause we got into discussion on area A. So, area B, um, has four-story and five-story elements, correct?
Correct.
And the five-story element is setback, the, the fifth floor, if you will, is setback from Main Street, thirty feet, is that correct?
Correct.
On that top floor elevation, and that carries around the side on River Road as well, correct? I believe there were some cross-sections.
Yes, I believe so.
Right? And the area C will also be five-story?
Area C will be four stories and fifty-four feet.
And it does have some setback, depending on the elevation, on that fourth floor. All right, I just wanted to touch on that. Okay. All right. Any other questions before we open it up?
I'll leave it.
All right. Thank you. If you'd like to make a comment about the application, please step forward, state your name, spell it, and provide your street address.
Just let me swear a testimony. Mr. Chair.
You saw me swear a testimony before the board gave a sweep election.
Sure, that's fine. I thought I was asking a question.
Okay, you're just asking questions, that's fine.
Yeah, for now. Why, why don't you swear?
I swear, you can say that.
Then I say that.
Then you're covered, you're wet.
Absolutely. Thank you, yes. Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, for those who don't know me, I'm William J. Schipers, Sammy Schipers Nodzki, that word is pronounced like that term.
You say your address, your office?
Set one zero zero seven A, Main Street.
Thank you.
Uh, I also have property on Twelfth Avenue, that was property over there. For the board, I am the Development, uh, Council for the fourth project that is not here tonight.
It's not in the Seaport redevelopment zone?
Correct. So, just very briefly, thankfully, this is occurring. Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Councilman. Mr. Lindsey made a comment potentially about sequencing. I feel compelled on behalf of my clients, indicating that we're not looking, because we're not the Seaport redevelopment zone, to be either subject to sequencing or dial back to the end of the process. We're a simple twelve-unit, very, very compliant proposal, as the mayor had mentioned during various public hearings, that we were effectively compliant, which I agree. Uh, we are demo-ready, so I would ask Mayor Council, hopefully, this process is going to happen, uh, in the near future. Donna Jennings, our redevelopment bargaining council, I spoke to her Friday about this, she was unaware. I told her I was telling. So, from that perspective, we hope we are not sequenced later because of these three larger projects. We are individually from the town looking to move forward with the problem. The other element, I would just point out, because I've been involved in the process, I have read very thoroughly and diligently before settlement agreements, three of which you're addressing tonight, and I don't want the board, and people may disagree with me, but I don't want the board or the public to feel a sense that when these, uh, projects come before this board, that there is a breadth or a significant leeway to this board. You started earlier, Mr. Chairman, saying, "We're pretty locked in," or "effectively." That's what I was sensing from you. These settlements are comprehensive. They've had the floor plans, elevations, studies, uh, council negotiations over months, if not years. These are pretty locked in. If you have not read the settlement agreements, I urge every board member to do so, I'm sure Mr. Kovats has. The agreements are collaborative effort by the developers and the town to meet the co-op obligations, and under those agreements, there are affirmative representations by both the developers and the town, that they're going to cooperatively move forward to execute the plans agreed to. So, if there's speculation or thoughts that there's gonna be wholesale changes, that is not with the four settlement agreements, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening. Benjamin Adele, my partner, saw Ewing appearing on behalf of Klein's Fish Market this evening.
You're gonna swear a testimony?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry, what was your last name?
Adele. My name is Nancy A.D.E.L.L. My clients are here this evening to express a serious concern as to the public parking that will be significantly modified as a result of these amendments. My clients are here as concerned citizens and business owners, residents of Belmore. Let me be clear, this is not an anti-development campaign, this is not an anti-affordable housing campaign. My client's concerns focus on the existing parking dilemmas in Belmore, how these amendments will exacerbate the lack of parking by removing public parking stalls from this area of the borough. Uh, before I introduce my clients this evening, I do want, just to the board's consideration, to read a section of the twenty-sixteen master plan reexamination report. Referencing page sixteen, that the two thousand and six update also recommended that the need for parking must be addressed in relation to the proposed commercial and residential development of the Seaport Village Redevelopment Plan. The expanded Seaport Village Redevelopment area will enable the expansion of the Seaport Village Redevelopment Plan to address the need for parking by considering the relocation of the municipal building and parking for public or redevelopment use, while a parking deck may be built on a portion of the Seaport Plaza currently planned for surface parking. The parking deck would have approximately two hundred thirty-six parking spaces over four floors. The plan calls for retail spaces on the ground floor fronting Seaport Plaza and Seventh Avenue. The redevelopment plan allows for recaptured root space for outdoor recreational activities if desired, reducing the total parking to a hundred and eighty-eight spaces. We would respectfully submit that there is an inconsistency, as these amendments do not address, uh, the master plan reexamination report's goal of considering a parking deck or a parking garage in this area of the borough. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Todd Vitales of Klein's Fish Market. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
You saw me swear a testimony before the board gave a sweep election?
Yeah.
Okay. State your name, sir.
It's, uh, Todd Vitales. It's V.I.T.A.L.I.S. Address, so either seven away River Road or ten thirty-six Fifth Avenue, Wall.
Which one would you like?
Whatever you got. Basically, you know, I'm not, basically, we're not anti-development. I mean, we could definitely use a cleanup down there, but, as our lawyer said, and as Mr. McDermott pointed out, um, the parking situation's pretty bad. I mean, we're looking at, what was it, three hundred, well, however many units are coming in, basically, we're looking at two to three-story units, on the average, maybe one point five cars per unit. So, what happens in the summer when you have everyone coming into town, people have guests? I just feel like it's gonna be a huge problem. Um, all the people are gonna end up taking, well, people coming into town are gonna end up taking the parking in, say, Belmore Plaza or the residential parking. So, I just think it's gonna create a huge problem for the residents and the business owners. I know in the past, with other redevelopments, there was always talk of a parking garage, and I think that's something that may need to be addressed. Um, you know, I can't hurt to ask and put it out there, because I just don't think this is gonna work out with what's being proposed here. It's just gonna be a mess. It's kinda all I have to say.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anyone else in the public?
David Wolf, W.O.O.L.F. six oh two six seven.
You saw me swear a testimony before the board gave a sweep election?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My, my question, I think I need to first clarify payment in lieu. Is somebody willing to do that, able to do that?
So, instead of, um, building a physical unit, uh, they're required, if agreed upon amount, um, for each unit they're not providing, they need to pay into a fund for the borough to create affordable housing elsewhere or rehabilitate existing affordable housing.
Okay, thanks. So, the master plan calls out X number of residence, residences to be built, and X number of affordable housing. You said two parking spots per residence and zero for affordable housing.
So, the current Seaport redevelopment plan?
Yes.
Has a parking requirement for residential uses of two residential, two parking spaces per residential unit, um, and zero parking spaces per affordable residential unit?
So, at the time of a developer's application beyond this Seaport redevelopment master plan, the developer may pay in lieu?
No. So, the units that are not being physically created, they're paying in lieu, and that's part of the overall settlement agreement, that's part of, um, the whole affordable housing process. The, um, number of, uh, parking spaces required is different from the Seaport redevelopment plan, but that was also part of the development process. They're not paying for part of the settlement process. They're not paying for any parking spaces.
No, but they're paying to create a residential s, space in lieu of a affordable housing space, correct?
No. They're paying for an affordable housing unit to be, they're elsewhere, yeah, basically.
Okay. So, as a developer comes in, would the developer be modifying the number of residences to affordable housings per each one of these sub-lots?
No.
No, okay. Then, thank you.
And that's as it relates to the funding, correct, that this fund is set aside?
No, not as it relates to the funding.
As far as what's here?
As it relates to parking.
Yeah, I don't think that adjusts at all. That's the whole reason for the detailing here.
Thank you.
That's the reason I was questioning what I was about. That's the reason I was questioning what I was about the small print and a few other little loopholes. So what it is here is part of the requirement.
All right, thanks.
Hi, it's Katrina Clapsis, 1304 B Street.
Do you want me to spell the testimony? Do you think it will be true? The whole truth?
As well as I can, yes.
As well as you can, okay. Can you spell your last name for us?
Clapsis, C.L.A.P.S.I.S.
Thank you so much.
This, I'm sure you guys can appreciate how incredibly hard to understand all of this is for, I think, a lot of the public. I'm speaking for myself, but I've spoken to many people in town, and throughout this whole ordeal, there's a lot of confusion about the whole thing. So I hope you guys, maybe you guys are confused too, I don't know. This is my town, naive, but this amendment that you're proposing or is being put before the body, what is the obligation of the planning board in reference to this? My town, naive, what is, what are they doing? Are you going to vote yes, we're going to go for this amendment, or no, we're not going to go for this amendment? What is it?
We don't, let me field this.
Yeah.
We don't approve or disapprove. What we say is, we're taking a look at this development regulation. We're overlaying that with the master plan. And if we think the development regulation is inconsistent with the master plan, we advise Mayor and Council where we think that inconsistency or inconsistencies are, tell them that, and then Mayor and Council with that information can do a variety of things. Either change the development regulations so it's consistent, leave the inconsistency, and go forward. That may change the vote requirement for Mayor and Council from a simple majority to a heightened majority. But we don't approve or disapprove. We sort of act as, as I said before my opening word, the legislative committee for Mayor and Council. We're familiar with the master plan, we're familiar with a lot of development regulations. But as it applies to the master plan, is this consistent? To the extent that the master plan obliges us to take care of affordable housing, we find that consistency. To the extent that what's happening in the zones allows for development of this type, mixed residential and commercial, that's consistent. Where it is, if I would say, inconsistency are with the existing development regulations, which will let Mayor and Council know, but I don't think that changes the vote requirement for Mayor and Council. It's where it's inconsistent with the master plan. And if I just confused you more, I did, I didn't, I didn't.
It really did.
I will say, so this board here tonight, they're only, you know, they say whether or not they feel it's consistent with the master plan, and then it goes back to the council. The council is, I'm sorry, I have a lot of meeting dates on my mind, so someone can help me. The council is introducing this at their next meeting?
Yep.
Next week. And then April 15th, there'll be a public hearing on this, and then at that time, it would be adopted. So on April 15th, you have the opportunity to go to the council meeting and let the Mayor and Council know any of your concerns with the plan or any questions you might have.
Right. But now, if, so if we go, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that these, these projects have already been, a judge has already ruled on what Belmar's obligation is. Am I correct?
No.
I am not correct. So does that mean that these plans that we're seeing, and I know that they aren't cycling, but what is being proposed, the amount, the density, the parking, all of this, Belmar can say, no, this is way too much for us, we don't want to do this?
I would say, in theory, yes.
In theory? What does that mean?
Well, the parties have, in a sense, entered into good faith negotiations to reach a settlement. I'm not part of that. In other words, there is an overlay of government that says, the council on affordable housing says, "Belmar, you need to find a way to meet your need for low, moderate-income houses, you need to do that." At this point, we have not done that, but we're in the process of negotiating with these three developers in this area to meet that need.
So that process has not been completed? You're saying these, that these agreements have not been completed?
I'm going to introduce you to Development Council.
Good, thank you. Sure.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's great. I just wanted to push her off.
Let everybody make sure they hear.
You might just turn around and use your outside voice.
I was hoping we'd call her up because there was a lot of head nodding going on. So I wanted to make sure we gave it.
Yeah. So I'm Fran McManaman, McManaman, St. Alton and Bauman. We serve as redevelopment council to the borough. So we do not represent the planning board, we serve as redevelopment council to the borough. So to answer your question, the council has approved, which has been referenced several times, the settlement agreements for the projects that are addressed in this amendment to the redevelopment plan. The next step in this process is for a court to conduct a fairness hearing. So at that point, the court will approve the settlement agreements with these three intervenor projects, the fourth project that was referenced earlier, and then a settlement agreement with fair share housing. So while the court has not made a final determination, council has already authorized the settlement agreements, approved the settlement agreements for these projects.
Okay. So really, basically, then, all of these projects are a done deal as far as the town of Belmar is concerned, am I, is that like in dopey language, is that what we're saying?
The town, yeah. The borough has agreed to authorize the settlement. The borough has authorized the settlement agreements, which was done by resolution here in July.
Right, like over the last.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So really...
You have to go back to the mic, I'm sorry. You looked really comfortable there. But I got to bring you back to the mic.
I thought you were going to go to the mic, I'm sorry. It's just, it's a little mind-blowing as a resident, this whole, this whole thing. And the reason I find it a little disturbing and ironic is that when our mayor and our two council people who were in Mark Levis and Maria Ronzenaro ran for, for their positions, the main thing that they really wanted was to contain the development in town. And in fact, in many, many occasions, that's all that was talked about in town during that whole thing. And it all started with the Repetti Project or the Mediterranean, right? And it went on and on and on about how that was not going to happen, and you were going to stop that, all of this wonderful stuff. Okay. Now, it's just ironic to me that that same project, that immediately upon taking office, that same project, that 60-foot height for that one middle building, was immediately rescinded, that six, for that one portion of that whole project, immediately rescinded. And now we're talking about, that was 60 feet. And now we're talking about 65 feet, and we're not even 100% sure, in reality, how high those buildings are going to be, because we're not even 100% sure. It sounds to me, is that grade or is that first floor?
It's first floor, so it won't be relevant to grade.
It won't be grade, it'll be, so in other words, we can maybe...
I mean, it appears that elevation-wise, the grades pretty close, first floor to that grade, but there'll be some differential.
So there is a possibility that that 64.6 or whatever it is could even be higher?
From grade, you know, there could be a variation.
I just find it ironic. I just find it ironic, Mayor and Council, that we find ourselves in this position, we really do.
Do you mind if I make a quick statement on that?
Well, let, let, let her make her comment.
And, and, and I understand, and then, and then on top, to me, when that was rescinded, that 60-foot was rescinded, what that created was like an adversarial situation between the council and the developer, and the developers that were looking to, to do these projects. And negotiations, there were no negotiations at that point, immediately went into a lawsuit to go into about the affordable housing. It's very, it's, it's not so confusing, it's actually very disappointing, as Almond has said, that we find ourselves in a position where we're not going to have this big development, we're going to fight against this big development, all of these things. We now find ourselves with over 400 units with gigantic buildings. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Crystal, let's go ahead.
No, I guess, I just want to say, for the record, you know, if the existing Mediterranean project had been approved in its previous form, it would have added nothing to the affordable housing units in the town.
Unless you negotiated it. I'm sorry.
There was no affordable housing plan, we didn't have any number, how many units were required for Belmar. So the purpose of negotiating with these developers in this state was to make sure that we're not going to end up with 20-story buildings. Because had we not done anything in terms of coming up with an affordable housing plan, the borough was vulnerable to a builder's remedy lawsuit, which a lot of these developers were already looking at. So the purpose of doing these negotiated contracts or these settlement agreements was to be able to control development and not have 20-story buildings, and make sure we're meeting our affordable housing obligation. Because if we didn't add any units on those previous buildings, as we've done in the past, a lot of the previous buildings did not have any affordable housing in them, we would still be having to do even more development just to meet around three obligations. So by doing this step, we're actually reducing the amount of development we have to do within the town. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, please. Step back.
Do you want me to spell the testimony? Do you think it will be true?
Yes.
State your name, please spell your last name.
Kevin Brennan, B.R.E.N.N.A.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
And your address as well?
I'm sorry.
Your address as well?
605 Fifth Avenue.
Thank you.
Seems to me like it's, there's a lot of talk about affordable housing. And does anybody know, maybe the council or the board, how many units are today the borough is shy or is in deficit?
So for round three, I don't know, with our attorney.
No, I'm sorry. Take the development out of this, I'm just trying to understand for the amount of units...
That's what I'm saying, for round three of the affordable housing requirements.
Round three of the affordable housing?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that is.
It's approximately 100 and 200.
I'm sorry, but that's for, if a developer puts the housing, is that correct?
That's what the town's obligation is, regardless of developer, nothing to it to them. That's what we have to put.
So the town, could the town build their own affordable housing? In theory?
I imagine they could, in theory.
Right. Yes. So am I hearing it right, with all these phases, that the town is requesting that the developers put in the affordable housing?
As part of their development, correct?
Right. So they're, we're kind of requesting that they do the work that the township could do. Is that right?
Actually, request is known.
The township, right. Township could not... What's right is, we have people, developers, who want to develop in Belmar. And what has happened is, the developers want to help us. So they can make money, and we can meet our affordable housing. That's how the developers are involved. We don't go to the developers and say, oh, you want to build something and put some affordable housing in? No. The developers come to the borough and they say, we want to build X, and you know what we'll do? We'll include a number of affordable housing units. And all of that gets negotiated over time. That's how it works. Well, but it could work if Belmar built their own affordable housing unit, right? If one of the billionaires gave us tons of money to the town, we could build 100 units tomorrow. Okay. Just trying to understand the process here, because it's...
I think the mayor is highlighting the, the funding challenges associated with building your own.
Right. No, I understand that part, it's just practically. Is there a timeline when Belmar has to meet their, their wants that they're shy right now? It was 10 years ago. Right, moving forward there. Is there a timeline when they have to, when Belmar has to meet their minimum requirement? Yes, right now. Right now, we have to meet.
And in another 10 years, it will change.
And now meaning? We're behind. No, I, I understand, but you can't build a building like that. No, 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 as long as we have the deal, the plan, that's really what's important. Okay. So it's, it's not the physical building? No, no, no. It's the agreement, everything that goes on with, you know, what we're doing here, what we're going to do with the council. And you have to have that plan by a certain time? Depends on what the court says. The court is pushing us to have it done on a particular time. That's what that fairness hearing is for. No, it's, it's, the court will intervene, will come and say, this is what I want it done. We've been working with the court to get it done on the timeline that the court has approved. Because it seems to me like, you know, when we ask the developer, or when the developer approaches us and says, I'll help you, that we give them a little leeway. And we say, maybe you can build this a little higher, maybe you can get a little, maybe we can not put the parking as much as, is that kind of real world? Real world is, well, like, we don't want an eight-story building with two levels of, of parking, and this is hypothetical, no one has suggested this, but we don't want an eight-story building with two levels of parking. And you say, what, what can we negotiate? And, and that's how it starts. Well, we'll go to six, and then one level, or maybe four and a half, and, you know, that's, that's the negotiation that goes on. I think I have an issue. Did you get it?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. Fugish Motel to 10 12th Avenue.
Do you want me to spell the testimony? Do you think it will be true? The whole truth?
I just want to know.
Just spell your last name for us, please.
Does anybody know the population of Belmar right now?
Not exactly. Probably around 67, 6800.
Okay, you're close. What is this going to increase our population to? With all these people coming in and building, what kind of population are we going to have in this town?
I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Nobody knows.
We did, we did a presentation back in July and June with Half Point information, which is on the website, which details everything that is going to be the result of this type of development. So for everyone out there, if you want to take a look at that, all the, all the agreements are there, all the pictures, everything is, is on the website, it's been there since June or July. Off the top of my head, I don't know.
But nobody knows what this is going to...
Yes, we know, I just can't remember.
...increase our population to.
I, I, I don't remember what.
I am a daughter of a fire chief. I see fires spreading rapidly. You want to build all these high rises? How many fire departments do we have in this town? One. Come on. She knows, she saw a fire spread rapidly, and they do. These buildings are going to need charging stations because these people might have Teslas. So how are we going to be able to handle all this? Fires. You watch the news every night, there's a fire, and I'm, I'm afraid. We had a big fire in this town three, four weeks ago.
I lost my house in a fire 10 years ago.
Were we able to handle? What happened? There's three fires at one time. Well, all this overdevelopment. Can these developers consider this? No. I am, I've seen fires, I'm from Patterson, New Jersey, and I've seen fires happen, and they happen rapidly. So I fear for this town if we ever get a fire. Thank you. (applause) Fire is spreading rapidly, she'll tell you, it has drawn her blow. A lady, Bella.
603 Fifth Avenue. P.I.Z.Z.O.L.A.T.O. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome. I'd like to thank everybody here and wish you a happy St. Patty's Day. And, you know, so this deal is already done. Is it a done deal?
Party's entered into good faith negotiations, I think the court is expecting it to be resolved.
Okay. So if it, if it is a done deal, I just want to...
Okay, so if it, if it is a done deal, I just want to propose my opposition to it. Now, I agree with it. And I think it's going to be an overburden on our school system, police, fire, roads, all the other facilities in the town.
I know. Speak louder.
You know, it's just, we're not Asbury or Long Branch. We're Belmar and it's going to mess up our, you know, little community as we know it. So anyway, on that, I just want to, uh, just say it's a shame. So, thank you. Let me speak. Thank you. Oh, we should build a 10-story parking garage like.
A charging station.
Mr. Thomas, can I testify before the court of the truth? May I ask you to state your name, spell your last name?
My name is Maury Scalera, S-C-A-L-E-R-A. I live at 602 D Street like a dog. I just want to echo the concern about parking. I live obviously in the neighborhood that will be impacted by all of this. And I know because I live there that you can't even find parking now during the summer. And obviously there's going to be a concern for everyone in those neighborhoods that their parking will become even worse. So although I do not favor the idea of a parking, in fact, I think we have no choice. I think when people upgrade their homes, we must have a two-parking, car parking requirement, right? You have one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, right? As residents and property owners are required to have certain numbers of parking spots so that we don't stress the streets. So I really echo Mr. de Blasio's comments that if two spots are required, I'm not sure why we got to 1.07, 1.51, and I don't remember your third ratio. But I do think that parking is a concern. And some of those affordable units might also have cars, right? There's zero, a lot of, so I just see parking in the summer now without any of this and really hope that those issues can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's from the public?
Public.
I'm Barbara Box Brennan and I'm 605 Fifth Avenue in Belmar.
Mr. Thomas, can I testify before the court of the truth? Just spell your last name.
So it's B-O-T-Z, B-R-E-N-N-A.
Thank you.
So, um, yes, I have a commercial properties in the quarter of Fifth and Main Street. Those people that work there and that go to those businesses, they all park on my block. There just is no parking. And so in this new plan, is there, you talked about parking for the housing units, but is there a commercial parking plan?
Nope. For, um, sub area B?
Uh, yeah, 6,000 square feet of commercial space.
There is no parking required for the commercial.
Our road is so chewed up and I did try to repair it, but there's so much traffic on Fifth Avenue. I mean, Mary, you must know that if you live on the first block, it's chewed up. Anyway, I would like to see, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, can I testify before the court of the truth? May I ask you to state your name, spell your last name?
Mike.
Give us a short answer.
E. E. State your name, spell your last name. Uh, I would just like to ask the, the, I would just think of looking at the master plan again. If what counsel for mine said is true, part of the master plan called for parking, a parking garage or some parking provision in the Seaport area, why isn't that being done? Would this violate the master plan? Because there is a parking problem. I understand the, I understand how your hands are tied by the settlement agreements. But if this is violating the master plan, that should be thought about and really looked at. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Irene and Paul, and this is to the Belmar.
Mr. Thomas, can I testify before the court of the truth? Just spell your last name for us, please.
And you, um, have.
Thank you.
Chris Thomas, Franklin, Sharpe, this group bringing up discrepancy. And for you, Michael, for bringing up the infrastructure. And for you, Louis Faro, I believe you were the one that brought up the, what would be brought up? I'm going to bring it down. Parking and the height of the buildings. Um, my uncle lives over in the senior building right here. So originally, Belmar is a sleepy little town. I would love it to remain the way it is, but unfortunately, these builders are very greedy and all things are happening. I wasn't beginning at the senior building with these ladies, discussing the affordable housing. I'm not here to discuss pros or cons. I will say Governor Murphy is on his second term. And once he's out, I pray the next governor of our state is not going to be pushing this so badly. I don't see Spring Lake or Avon pushing for the affordable housing. There's Howell, Millstone, Neptune, all these places have a vast amount of land. Yet Belmar is the one that's paying the price for Monmouth County. Um, and then you allow this allowance. Sorry. Help people out so I can see. Stop. Anyway, um, I understand it's a done deal. I loved what you said before. You're like, well, instead of doing 198 units, why don't you do 100 units? The senior building already has water sewer problems, tough pressure, tough sewer problems. Anyone who builds more than a four family, in my opinion, should have to redo the infrastructure for the plumbing. I know the electric is like, that's a serious danger. And, and electric should be required to be underground if people are going to be building rather than putting, like they did to me on 15th Avenue, they slapped a pole. And now my unobstructed view, I have a pole with wires on it. So, um, you know, things happen and beyond my control. I'm not smart. I don't understand these things. I look to the mayor and council to please now stop it, to stop any future. It's, it's a slap in the face to Belmar. Spring Lake isn't doing this. Avon isn't doing it. Belmar is building these buildings. The only two buildings we should have had is the five-story senior building, which was built years ago, and the nine-story Marina Towers. You want to make the place beautiful. You want the Seaport redevelopment. I understand these builders are coming in and they have to do this. But if we could postpone and push back, the next governor, I believe, is not going to say we have to have all this affordable housing. If you can afford to live in Belmar, you live in Belmar. If you can afford to live in Jackson where I grew up, you'll, you'll live in Jackson. But it's, it's just done. I have one more thing to say. Okay. All right. The parking, maybe these people who are building phase A, B, C, D can all get together and build us a parking garage, whether it's paid or free, we definitely need it. And, um, I've learned by going to these meetings throughout the years, it doesn't matter how much any of us protest, you guys are going to pass it. And it's, it's horrible how you've made us feel for us that have fallen in love with the town and have chose to live here, to raise our families here. It's a shame and I know some of you guys personally, but thank you very much for listening to me.
Anyone else from the public?
Thank you.
How are you?
Mr. Thomas, can I testify before the court of the truth?
I do. Tony, don't forget 506 Eighth Avenue.
Spell his last name.
A-L-M. As a mayor, you have ideas. Gentlemen and ladies, thank you very much. This process is going to be cumbersome, not just for you, but for the entirety of this power. And I just wanted to speak in advance of that to maybe set the tone for what the expectations would be. I would like to just address one thing. Knowing that your hands and our hands may be restricted in this matter, I anticipate questions to come from everybody on the board. Mr. McDermott, your questions today were excellent. Mr. de Blasio, great job as well. Ms. Sharpe, thank you. Everybody has a responsibility to review in detail every site and every drawing that's going to be coming in front of us. And your thoughts and questions, comments, or concerns are going to shape these projects for our community. So in advance, I'm going to say thank you for your due diligence on the avenue of community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion. I will look to the board to offer comments. Once again, there's two parts to this. One, if there's anything you feel like should be proposed in terms of edits to the amendment, please note that. But let's remind ourselves of Doug's comment. And that really focuses on, is this, is this amendment consistent with the master plan? Yes or no? Rick, I'm going to start with you.
There are certain aspects that I don't like, but our hands are tied on that, so I'm not going to address those. The few comments that we are going to make to the mayor and council, I agree with. So given that, what we can rule on tonight is consistent with the master plan.
Thank you. Chris?
I am, I'm satisfied with the comments and concerns and suggestions that fellow board members have bubble up this evening. And I do feel it's consistent with the master plan.
Thank you. Mike?
I think the way it went about and the way this came in front of us and the way it's been presented to the public, complete lack of transparency. I think this lawsuit being started on March of 2023, less than 60 days of this administration being in office, means they didn't sit down with these developers, negotiate with them, try to get affordable housing put in, in what was within the current Seaport redevelopment regulations. Our zoning ordinances were thrown out the window in court. And this is not, as presented today, is not in line with our master plan. Parking, height, number of units. Don't know what's going on with utilities. So not in my favor.
Thank you. Bill?
It's, it's, it meets the master plan, but it's, there's some inconsistencies that hopefully may be heightened and so on. Maybe able to address it just through goodwill, through, through our, our elected officials negotiating with the developers. But when your hands are tied from above, it's, it's frustrating. I think we all prefer much more local control, but we have to deal with what we have, by the cards we have.
Thank you. Brett?
I think that if you look around, I think in a lot of towns, not just in our area, but throughout the whole state, the builders and developers are coming in and kind of forcing the hand of the municipalities. I think it's a kind of a broken system right now, but it's a system we have. I would be in favor of making the parking spaces unassigned. I think that that would help alleviate some of the issues with the shortfall of parking. I think between that and not addressing the parking situation. And I, I think it's kind of a shortfall in the area of, you know, fostering a thriving retail on Main Street. These are the two areas where I feel like it is not consistent with the master plan.
Thank you. Louis?
I also don't think it's compliant with the master plan. Clearly, the parking is deficient, both residential and the proposed commercial, which is no parking allowed. Plus, the master plan didn't call for the creation of additional parking, even though it was supposed to be for, for this site here, but nevertheless, it's still called for the creation of additional parking spaces to alleviate the problems that you see on Fifth and Sixth Avenue. As far as under the guise of being for affordable housing, I mean, the section, the part A here, they're not even providing the full amount of units to be allotted for affordable housing. They're, they're buying you back.
That's right.
So I think that's just a ruse. I appreciate the hard work and effort that mayor and council did to negotiate the agreement with the developers, but I think we need to go back to the joint board and renegotiate.
Ms. Bell, I don't know if you can comment on the, the parking section that we referenced, not just by Louis, but by members of the public?
Sure. So, um, the, it has been a want, a desire of the borough for the last 25 years. And both the master plan and in the Seaport, the Seaport redevelopment area calls for the pre, Seaport redevelopment plan calls for the creation of a parking garage. But that plan was developed in the early 2000s. And when it was originally created, it was anticipated that one master developer would develop the redevelopment area in its entirety. Economic conditions changed over time. That never happened. The redevelopment area was expanded and has been developed in a kind of piece. We've seen little redevelopment projects happen, but we haven't seen a large-scale redevelopment project happen since that plan has been put in place. And so the parking garage has just never come to fruition because there hasn't been a developer who's come to the borough and said, I want to pay to put in a parking garage in Belmar. And it is an expense for the borough, both in terms of the property and building the garage that I don't think Belmar has been able to, it just hasn't, hasn't made, um, hasn't been able to get done over the past 25 years.
And was there a point in time that developers were paying in on a first stall basis or something? Did that ever come to fruition, agreements around that or anything?
So one of, um, so the Seaport redevelopment plan allows for parking to be provided in a number of ways. You can provide parking on-site. You can provide it off-site, within a certain distance of the, um, the site. You can create new, um, public parking spaces or you can pay into a fund. And it's part of the developer's agreement, how you go about creating all of your parking on-site. I can't speak to how every agreement has been put into place and.
But there, but there was a scenario that would allow for that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. I just wanted that clarity because there's been a lot of discussion around that parking garage.
Right.
So, uh, Councilman Levis?
Uh, I just thought, I would like to say sort of, there's three parties that negotiate a lot of the affordable housing. The Melger, the Borough, there's an entity called Fair Share Housing. The Melger is trying to maximize the number of units that you build in the town. The Borough is trying to reduce the size of these buildings as much as possible. Fair Share Housing, the third party, is trying to maximize the number of affordable units you're going to get out of this. So it's a three-way negotiation and trying to make sure that everybody is satisfied and happy enough and meeting the obligations. I think the reason a lot of this was started when we first took office in 2023 was because there was no affordable housing plan. And I will read a quote directly from the borough attorney from 2019. He said, "As you are aware, the borough is willfully deficient in the affordable housing obligations. We've discussed this matter briefly with the mayor and council. I believe you agree we need to, need to review or adopt an affordable housing plan, presuming there is one. I am disturbed that the borough is lacking in this regard and worried about the possible litigation in the future of builders remedy lawsuits, which would leave the borough in great jeopardy." That's what we're looking at if we do not approve this plan. We are very limited in what we can do, but we at least have the planning board to be able to review these things. If this plan is shot down or we go back and negotiate, oh, we want to get 20 units, then the builder can say, we want to have all the buildings. Then Fair Share Housing can come in and say, well, you guys aren't meeting your obligation, so guess. Then Fair Share Housing can come in and say, well, you guys aren't meeting your obligation, so guess what? Builders' remedy lawsuit, and now the builders can build anything they want, without the borough's approval, as long as it's meeting those affordable housing obligations. So while this plan, honestly, it kind of sucks. It sucks to have to approve something like this, but it's way better than the alternative, because at least we have some control, and at least we, we can go back to the board. We can try to negotiate as much as we can, that's what we're going to do. But if we just come out and say no, say, we're not going to go with this plan, then we're going to see a lot worse coming in our future. Um, I do think this project, these projects are in line with the master plan. I don't love them, it's, it's, it's the hand we, we are dealt.
Thank you. Mayor Buck, please go.
Uh, I agree it, uh, meets the, uh, the master plan. Um, just a few comments, you know. I wish when we came into office, we didn't have to do this. I don't think anyone on the council i- is relishing the idea of having to approve this. If we could, you know, if we could just say, oh, let it go away, uh, that would have been great. But we weren't going to do that, because that was what happened in the past. Um, so we had to deal with it, we took it, we did what we have to do, and that's why we're here now. But I know everyone on the council, if we could just make it go away, we would make it go away. Uh, the second thing is, the two thousand and sixteen master plan, I really wish somebody would have built a garage. You know, we're nine years after the plan, and we still don't have a garage. So, you know, I mean, that's a, was a great idea, there's been development in the town since then, and nobody built a garage. So there we have it. Um, the third thing is, you know, just to point out to the public, uh, this was all presented also at the council. Right? If you go back on our ecotreesixty.com, on the public documents, you'll see there's a affordable housing section. Uh, on April ninth, twenty twenty-four, we had a, uh, overview by our attorneys of the, our obligations, what the background was, and the status of our Depravity Judgment Act. In June twenty-fifth, we had another presentation for the public about, uh, affordable housing. And then on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, we had a third presentation. Okay? So, uh, to suggest that this administration has not been transparent, I think it's just neglecting what is right here in black and white. Okay? I don't think we could have been any more transparent than we have been. Um, and, you know, as Councilman Levis said, you know, we, we have to do what we have to do. It really sucks, but, um, you know, we're negotiating against three parties, plus we forgot the court. You know, we, we, we're dealing with three different entities, and then we also have the court telling us, and telling all the partners, you need to, you need to do this, you need to do that. If you don't do this, I'm going to do that. So it's like, you know, it's like we're in a, in a three-way fight, and the court's the referee, and, you know, and we're all trying to make the best of the situation. So, um, that's where we're at, right? Every town in the, in, in New Jersey has, has some obligation, okay? And it's not something that even, I don't even think the governor can get rid of it, because it's a constitutional, uh, mandate, right? So, I mean, the only way, I think, I'm not suggesting it, but I mean, I guess if the legislator wanted to, legislation wanted to, um, you know, pass a law that says we don't have to have affordable housing, well, then that, they could do that. So, you know, if you're fed up with affordable housing and you don't like it, you know what? Call your elected officials in Trenton and tell them, get rid of this. But for now, it's here, it's going to stay, but, you know, those are the people who have the power to change things. Unfortunately, you know, municipal officials, I don't care if you're in the city or a small town, you're stuck with mandating, you know, doing the mandates from the, from the court, constitutional obligation, and, you know, many, many towns are struggling with this. All you have to do is pick up the paper and you'll see. So, um, I think we're doing the best we can, and, uh, that's all I really can say, but I do think it, it meets the, uh, the master plan.
Thank you. Uh, I'll speak for myself. I've been serving either zoning or planning board for probably about fifteen years. You know, I, I look at something like this, and I think Bill Lindsey said it, that you feel like you're somewhat powerless in control, and it goes back to some of what the mayor and council were saying, that we really don't have control over this. It's disappointing. I'm sad, quite frankly, because I think this is going to change, change the whole makeup of our town. And I don't know if there's much we can do about it. It's, it's, it's sad. It's a very sad day. As it relates to the consistency of the master plan, uh, I am concerned that the parking, be it a garage that was never built, or whatever it may be, uh, is certainly, uh, a point of inconsistency. Uh, on the other hand, uh, as Christine Bell had noted, uh, as it relates to, uh, complying with the council of affordable housing requirements, we made tremendous headway. Uh, I agree, it's not as far as we'd like to be, be it more out of the developer or a less market rate out of the developer, uh, but I think it is, is a move in the right direction. Uh, so from that perspective, uh, I think it outweighs where we are different on some numbers of the parking, just the how it relates to the standard Seaport, that's closer than I thought it was going to be. Uh, so from my perspective, I think it is consistent with the master plan. Um, Doug, we did ask for some potential edits. I'm not sure if you had recorded those. Uh, some things like striking, uh, the details within that exhibit. Uh, I know, Greg, you had talked about the potential of, um, flexibility in terms of parking assignment. I'll say for consideration.
Yeah.
Uh, Bill, you had asked about potential consideration, as they signed developers' agreements, for considering the timing and the impact on the town. And I don't know if there was anything else that we missed in terms of comments that we'd like to get back. Linda?
Just my comment, uh, where, how our, our thinking goes in the process. So we don't go over this a lot of times when, you know, it's, it's a whole fear-mongering thing. Let's look at the reality. Can somebody build twenty stories, pouring water? And the answer, they'd never get approved to do this.
So, so boil that down to a comment, back to the mayor and council.
Yes, give consideration to making that one of the earliest steps in this process.
The permit process.
Of the permit process.
So accelerate a possible federal, state, or local permits?
Yes.
Or county permits, okay. And I know there was a discrepancy on the two fifty-seven versus two fifty-two, so we can correct that to be two fifty-two, because they were looking for some relief. All right. Anything else, Doug, that I'm missing?
Papers on me.
Papers on me, correct. Yeah. Okay. Um, at this point, I'll open it up to the public for any comments about anything else other than this application. If you'd like to make a comment, please step forward, state your name, spell, and provide your street address. Good evening, again.
Good evening, Harvey DePelleck, again. While you're talking, I'm taking notes to myself. Um, how many units do we need in Bellmar?
One or two, I said, for one.
A hundred and two?
And we do, we do need that requirement.
And how many are there, do we have right now?
We have, we need that requirement.
Including what's in here, right?
Correct.
Including a fifty-four, I think that's.
So you had told me at the senior building that.
I wasn't.
Oh, that wasn't you, uh, that you, um, that the people who built on, um, where the Bank of America building was, and tended the tracks, had promised like five or ten units to be affordable housing, and they never did it. And we had discussed that there was no retribution, there was no.
Recourse?
Recourse, thank you. So anyway, I was hoping it was just, I didn't know we needed a hundred units. I was hoping we needed like, you know, twenty, thirty minutes, because we already own, we, Bellmar al- already owns the police station and disco building. Why don't you just do a damn high-rise above that? We own it, I say we again, build it, and then take control of the Seaport redevelopment. I don't know if it's too late to kick that out, but, uh, isn't there any way that the public-owned land that you have right now, you guys could build above it, do some steel beam construction, get it going? We don't have to worry about a machete, machete-wielding, angry person cutting off some woman's arms like they did in Wall Township at the affordable housing thing on one thirty-eight. Um, you know, crazy things happen, but Bellmar has property that it owns, whether, I don't want to say just a firehouse, of course, but anyway, just a thought that went through my head. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, Kevin, Kevin Brennan again.
Yes, Kevin.
A general statement, I just want to make sure that I didn't give the wrong impression in a general way. Uh, I am pro-affordable housing. Uh, I, I, my comment has to do with the way sometimes we work maybe too closely with the developer, where we could think outside of the box, and excuse that, yeah, we're just talking about that, where we could get things done, and, uh, I, I mean, I, I could think firemen, policemen, people who work in town, that's how I view affordable housing. These are people who, teachers, or, you know, and everybody that should, who works in the town, I, I think should give them the opportunity. So it, that's, I didn't want to give the wrong impression that I didn't like affordable housing. I think it's a great thing.
And I think you'll find that in some of the documents Garrett does outline, but there's different tiers of affordable housing, low, odd, so they take that into account and in really working to get those, those, you know, those working hard individuals in our communities into those, uh, into those affordable homes. So I agree. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public portion. Doug, anything we need to wrap up?
Just draw a reservation to the, uh, Doug, please proceed with the report. You have our recommendations, and you have, obviously, you have the decision from the board. All right, thank you.
But I have a motion to close this, if you. Back in a second, also. Call a favor?
Aye.
Thank you.